proposed budget.
All right, thank you Mayor, I appreciate it. At the last meeting, if you'll recall, there was a couple of options that City Council suggested that we kind of look at when we, after we presented the proposed budget to you. So what we've done here is gone to actually set up three different options for you guys to consider. And so we'll go through and kind of just talk about the numbers of those a little bit and to see where we stand. And then we also have our spreadsheet that we normally have if you guys want to move anything else around to see what anything, other different options look like. We can go ahead and do that at this meeting and then at the next meeting, we can do the same thing if there's different options or anything different that any council member would like to look at. So we'll go through this. So just a couple of reminders, one cent added to the adblocker tax rate will generate 244,530. That's at a 99% collection rate, okay? If you'll remember last year, that amount, one cent on the tax rate was 225,627. Under the proposed budget, what we're proposing for the 21-22, it's a tax rate of 612. Last year's, the current tax rate that we're in now is 615. The no new revenue rate last year was 596,269. This year's no new revenue rate is 577,041. So just a slight decrease there. And then just two reminders, MNO tax rate was at 386,425. And then the current MNO tax rate that we're proposing is 351837. Obviously, that MNO rate will change if we change anything within the budget. And then the INS tax rate will stay the same, that's the one constant. It went from 228575 to 260163. A couple of items, just major expenditures that were in the budget and the proposed budget that you guys received last meeting. We've got the Buoy Circle drainage at 1.2 million, a command post vehicle for the Police Department at 264,627, Oak Creek Park upgrades, 241,920. The emergency response vehicles, those are going to be your police Tahoe's. I think we're going to be able to order eight of those. They tell us we're going to be able to get those. The fire truck replacement fund, the 250,000 that we've been putting in for the replacement in 2023 of platform number five. The non-civil service pay plan, the updates that we did with each of the department's pay plan for non-civil service employees at 105,353, so had equated out to that. The 4% merit increase was a cost of 602,288. We added six full-time positions at 532,439. And then the retention bonus, referral bonus, sign-on bonuses, we put in 100,000 for those. So that totaled out to 3.3 million. The proposed budget, so what that'll look like, you've got your beginning fund balance at 9.2 million. Proposed revenues are at 28 million, 538,245. The proposed expenses are 31 million, 696,738. So that gave us an ending fund balance at 6 million, 95,00296. With those expenses in the proposal, we had the target that we were trying to reach was 6 million, 22,0380. So we were about $72,000 over reaching our target. So we were in, we were in good shape there. And mind you, at the top, just a reminder, this is at the 19% fund balance target. So that can change, it can range from 15 per policy to be the lowest and then 25 is the highest that it could be, per policy. We usually in the past have been either at 19 or 20%.
Summer, do the proposed revenues include the proceeds from the last month's auction and the ARPA funds that are coming in?
That came in this current year?
Yeah.
That's going to be in your fund balance, the 9.2 million. Because they've already come in this current year already.
The first tranche of the...
Correct.
Okay.
Which, that's reflected, the 3 million that we just received Monday?
Yeah, the 3.5.
Yeah, that'll be reflected in the beginning fund balance.
Okay.
Because that's in our projected revenues.
Okay.
Which is going to be way over projections, obviously, because we weren't...
But that's only half of that 7.15 million, right?
That is correct. We won't get the other half till a year later.
Okay.
12 months later than what we actually received it. So those proposed revenues do not include that, to answer your question. Okay, option one, the first option that was talked about was to reduce the tax rate. So we reduced it to .590000, still at the 19% fund balance target. So that was a property tax rate drop of .022. So the difference in revenue there was 537,729. So in order to make that work, so we weren't in the negative on our target, so we could meet our target fund balance, we took out the command post for the Police Department and then we took out the Oak Creek Park upgrades of 241,920. The reason those, on our priority list that we prioritized back in February or March with staff, when we rated those, those were the ones that were ranked towards the bottom. So, and the fact that they also cost the most, so that kind of helped us out a little bit too. So, but they did rank at the, at the lower part of the capital items that we did have already put into the budget. And then also, you'll see this 40,000 that we took out, which is a special event that Parks was going to hold for Christmas, it was mistakenly put into the general fund, so we moved it over to the rec fund where it should have been. So you'll see that on all three options. So that's just something that we found when we were reviewing the budget. So that total decrease there is 546,547. If we can move, not moving Carol. I don't know if it's not working anymore. It moved away from me. There you go. Okay, so what that looks like now, of course, we'll have, we didn't change anything from projected, so the same beginning fund balance at 9.2 million. Obviously, the revenues are going down, so they're a little over 28 million. Proposed expenses went to 31 million, 150. Our proposed ending fund balance is now 6.1 million. Obviously, if our expenses going lower, our target now becomes 5,918,536. And so with just making those changes, now we're over our target, 185,578. That's quite a bit over our target. I need you to change me again. So what that looks like, this is just a comparison of side by side. So the tax rate, obviously, you'll see the change there. The beginning fund balance stayed the same because we didn't change anything from our projected. Our revenues went down by the 537,729. Expenses were in the better, so that's why they don't, they don't, they're not negative. So we calculated that to be 546,547. There's your difference in your ending fund balance, which is reflected with the 537 and the 546. That's why you don't see anything over there. Obviously, our target changed, so it got better at 103,844. And then we're also over our target quite a bit more at 112,662. And so what that looks out at, everything zeros out here, so there's your change in your revenues, there's your change in your expenses, there's your change over in your target, and then also the change in your target, all those zero out, so that, that gives you your difference there. Option number two, the second option that was brought up at last meeting, we kept the tax rate the same as proposed at 612000, at 19% target. 4% merit to the 5% merit. It was an increase of 154,662 in our expenses. We moved the special event to the rec fund, which is the 40,000 that we talked about. And then we took out the restroom remodel that we had in there from the annex and from the library. And those both totaled out to be 56,109. So that was a total of 58,553 increase in expenses. So there's what your, your beginning fund balance looks the same. Your proposed revenues were similar, a little bit on the expense side, went to 31,755,291. Your ending fund balance was a little over 6 million. And then your target obviously changed because our expense increased. And then, so that left us with just a little bit over our target at $3,238. Looking at that side by side, there's your no change in the tax rate, no change in the beginning fund balance or the revenues, just the expense changed there. And then your target obviously changed and then over our target changed. And then the next slide will show you, here's, here's how it all zeroed out. All right, option three, we took the tax rate from 612 to .59000, difference in revenues of 537,729. And then, so in doing that, we took out the command post again, the Oak Creek Park upgrades, we took those out, we moved the special event to the rec fund, and then we also included the 4% merit to the 5% merit. So that totaled out to 391,885. So now this is what your, your fund balance is going to look like at 9.2. Revenues went to the same about 28, little over 28 million. Expenses at 31, 31 million, 304,853. So your ending fund balance is 5949452. Your target's going to be 5947922 for just a little bit over our target at $1,530. Just looking at that side by side, all those I just mentioned, a little bit over your target. If you'll go to the next slide, that'll show how it all zeros out there. You're, you're changing your revenues, obviously, your revenues went down, your expenses went up, your, over your target went up a little bit, and then your, our fund balance target was a little bit higher because our expenses were higher and that zeroed everything out. So that's your options. You'll go on to the next one, Carol. So these were a couple of, just so, so you guys are aware, a couple of requested items that were not included in the proposed budget. We had a brush truck number four replacement at 165,000, gate repair at the Police Department, a little over 20,000, an additional communications operator at 53,000, four street maintenance workers at 223,972, a Peterbilt dump truck at 153,820, and then the City Works software at 75,000. So those are just a few of the things that you guys saw when the departments did their request, of things that were not included in the proposed budget. And then this is just a short little snapshot, real simple, cost of the options to a homeowner, and this is just 100, easy math, $100,000 home. So at the proposed tax rate, the cost per day was $1.68, cost per month was $51, cost per year is $612. Option two, when you go down in your tax rate, it's $1.62, per month is going to be $49.17, and then cost per year is $590, which is a difference of $22 a year, if you're looking at that. And then option two and option three are the similar, similar tax rates. So it's just a couple of options there to look at. And then I think, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions and then we can also pull up the spreadsheet, if that's what you'd like to do Mayor, and look at anything differently.
Any questions for Summer? Yes?
I've got a question. Summer, the 1.3 million CIP project for the Lake Tewocany intake?
Yes.
Is that out of general fund or is that included in the $50 million bond?
Right now, it's currently in the water, wastewater fund.
It's in the water and wastewater fund?
Correct. That's the top priority that we kept in there in the instance that we didn't pass the bonds, which we did now pass the bonds. So that's something that we could move over to that 50 million if, if the Water Committee sees fit to do that. But we went ahead and put it in because that's a top priority for us to have that down there.
And if we move that over, that would free up for some of these other things that you're withdrawing, correct?
Not necessarily these that we're talking about, we're talking about general fund here.
Right.
So we'd be talking about different water, water wastewater projects. We have plenty of those that we could allocate those funds to.
And none of the 7.15 is actually earmarked for anything at this point other than fund balance, correct?
The seven...
Or the, the ARPA funds, the three point?
Oh, the 3.2, as I say, we don't get the other 3.2 for another year, so...
Yeah.
No, it is not earmarked for anything, but that would be a council decision for what that needs to be earmarked.
And if, if we reduced our fund balance, what would we need to come down to about 17% to keep these things in?
We could play with it, if Talia wanted to mess with it, we certainly could. We, we didn't look at that, but we certainly could right now. We wanted to leave everything...
Are you suggesting all of the options remain in, command post, the oak?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. I'd like to see that also.
Saying keep everything in and see what that looks like.
I'd just like to see what, what we'd have to do to fund balance, because if we have our anticipated growth, we could very well, throughout the year, get enough increased revenue above what we're projecting to...
Well, and those items aren't going to cost any less next year.
Yeah, I know.
And again, money's not worth anything right now.
Right.
So...
If you kept it, if you're looking right there, you kept it at 7.17, 17 and a half, you're $57,000 over your target. And that's keeping everything that we talked about in the...
Including the 1% additional raise as well as the...
You'll have to include the raise over there on the other side, Talia.
Is that included?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's going to be.
Okay.
We'll have to go down to 17, yeah. That does include that, looking at that right there, if y'all can see that, I don't know if y'all can see that or not, but that includes everything, keeping everything in there, including the 4% to 5%, an additional 1% added to the merit, the tax rate at .59. And so then our target fund balance would be 17% and we'd be 34,967 over our target.
I like it.
I could be okay with that.
Yeah. Any, any comments from any of the council members? Ben, looking at?
Is it possible that we can get a copy of this, that we could just look at ourselves?
You want it as it, as it is right here, because I mean, then we have things changing on it, so...
Yeah, well, I mean, something that we can get in, we can move things around, just look at it before our next meeting.
Certainly, yeah.
So you took the target down from 17.5 to 17%? You had to do that to get...
Originally...
I mean, the fund balance, I said target. No, I know. So you took it down 2%?
2%, that's correct.
Okay. How many dollars does 1% mean in that, just off the top?
Well, you'd be, it would be 1% of this proposed expenditures up here is what you'd be looking at.
Oh yeah, you're, it's going to change as your expenditures...
No, I know.
Yeah, as your expenditures change, that, that's...
I know it does.
So you can't just say it equals this exactly, so...
But I, I did it for one scenario, but I couldn't remember what it was.
Yeah, so it's just 1% of that 31 million, 811,400, right now.
At 17%.
At 17.
1% is a little over 3.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Going to move a little bit.
It'll move, yeah, it'll move, but I'm just saying if you drastically change...
It doesn't move a lot.
Then it could go, yeah, so...
And I'm also thinking with the favorable bids we've been getting and projects we're doing, we could probably, some of, some of our proposed expenses may come in under, so I wouldn't have a lot of...
I like, I like that plan myself. I'd like to see, I particularly like to see the park upgrades at, at Oak Creek Park, yes, and all parks for that matter. Of course, we did, we're doing the Austin Park under a...
Under the CO bond.
Yeah, under the bonds, but I'd like to see that continue.
Is there anything that y'all didn't see that we need to think about in these, in these figures before we bring it back to you at the next meeting?
Obviously, we're exploring all grant options from...
Yes.
EPA or anybody else on the Buoy Creek project and any stormwater projects that we might have that might give us a little relief.
With the council governments and all that good stuff, yeah. Press and his team are doing that.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, I don't know how...
I just appreciate all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it, Summer.
I just want to compliment you. I think this is a great way to start understanding this at a rudimentary, rudimentary level. I really enjoy the presentation you make and the options that you gave us, so thank you very much. Okay, I guess we can go back into executive session now again, so we'll adjourn for the moment, and we'll be back at, for the regular session around 6 o'clock.